Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the Bamberg County School District Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is Monday, November 3rd, 2025, and it is six o'clock. Want to welcome all y'all here. Got a crowd full of bright shiny people. Hope y'all had a wonderful Halloween and looking forward to the holidays. It was so fortunate that for our teachers and our administrators to have Halloween on a Friday night, so the sugar high didn't go back down till Sunday afternoon. But we appreciate y'all being here. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. We can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pause for a moment of silence. Thank y'all. Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, members of the board. You've had an opportunity to review the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to accept the agenda as presented for today, November 29th.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Hurst for approval of the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. I think Ms. Bloom, Ms. Bunch, and Ms. Kathy. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right. Next is the approval of the minutes for October 6th, 2025. Board members, you've had an opportunity, I hope, to review the minutes of that meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I know having it so hard for you. And I was absent at the last meeting and some of the motions in the minutes are listed approved, nine to zero. And Jessica's already said that we need to be eight to zero.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And Ms. Jessica, if you could make a note to... Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
With that notation, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 6th, 2025 board meeting.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second? We have a second from Ms. Coker. All those in favor of approving the minutes with the notated correction signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here in nine. All right, next on the agenda is the presentation to Bamberg County School District's students for participation in the Go Science Tech Summer Program. And I think Ms. Bryant was going to be here, but she is feeling a little bit under the weather. So, Mr. Olmer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have several students that I'd like to recognize at Denmark Oldham Middle School and Bamberg Earhart Middle School who participated in the 2025 Go SciTech Residential Scholars Program this past summer that was presented by the South Carolina Governor's School for Science and Mathematics. Those students are... This is for Ms. Davis and Denmark Oldham Middle School, Shawnee Murray, and Naveah Swett. Okay, thank you, ma'am. And we've got a nice plaque here. Yep, a nice plaque. And for Bamberg Earhart Middle School, I feel like it's Christmas time already looking for presents. I have Mr. Rob Hurst IV. Mr. Rob, you here? Come on up here, buddy. All right, your mama, shake your hand. Congratulations, buddy. Oh, I get to get it too.
You got it? We got it.
Yes, you got another person. I'm sorry.
One more, yes, sir. And Ms. Angelia McMaster.
Good job. Mr. Olmer, could we get these students to maybe take a picture with the board with y'all?
I'd love that.
I know everybody's dressed sort of pretty tonight. If they could come on up and if we could just gather around, maybe stand behind us.
Where do you want us to stand? In front of the caterers?
Well, Ricky, tell us places, Ricky. You good at telling us what to do? As far as pictures go.
We're just proud of you. We want to make sure that we're taken with you.
Y'all would probably want to get up front, but I think...
Yeah, okay, let's move up in front and have the students in front of us.
Yeah.
Kathy, you need to...
Yeah, 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 just in case.
Please don't foul.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Because if you foul, they're gonna say I can do it.
I know, I know. Besides, I have to do it for now. But I'm going high, yes.
Congratulations.
I can do it high.
Yeah, good night, everybody. Everybody want to sit? Why don't we all be in the center? There you go, there you go. The highest thing.
All right, one, two, three. Good deal.
Did you put that on the website?
Congratulations, y'all.
All right.
Yeah, no, it's all right. I don't want you to foul again. Get sitting, get seated, just that.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the school reports. We will, I guess, go first with Dr. Shannon.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Shannon Johnson, a prospect, Demacola Elementary. We have current enrollment is 228, and that's up about 54 students from last... Our disciplinary report, we have only four referrals from the last time we met. Our school report card areas of growth and improvement. Our school has identified two key areas require focused attention, and that's the academic achievement and our school's climate. Under the academic achievement, while students have progress measures are acceptable, our overall achievement has not yet met our goals. To address this gap, we have implemented the following initiatives. Under science instruction, we have established a clear expectation that science be taught consistently across all grade levels. Additionally, grades second through fifth were now formally assessed science standards and indicators used to master connect to monitor students mastery of informed instruction. Also, under mathematics support, we are leveraging the expertise of one of our most effective math teachers to serve as instructional coach. This teacher will collaborate with colleagues across the grade levels to strengthen lesson planning, refine instructional strategies, and to improve assessment practice. This teacher will also conduct classroom observation and provide constructive feedback to support potentially improvement. So those are the two areas that we're going to focus on, academic achievement and school climate. For school climate, our survey data revealed a discrepancy between student perception and those of teachers and parent perception, with the student ratings lower than the teachers and the parents. So to address this concern, we will ensure that the students receive clear explanation of the survey, so they can provide informed accurate feedback, making sure they understand the questions and what exactly are they're being asked to reply to. This will help us better understand student experiences and make targeted improvement for our learning environment. So that's what we're going to do for academic achievement and school climate. On November 13th, 2025, between 3:30 and 5:00, we're going to be hosting a STEM night. STEM night is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. This STEM night will be at the elementary school hosting our gym for students and their family. They will participate in activities which include problem solving, critical thinking, and creativity. That concludes the Demacola Elementary School report. You have any questions?
Just one. I think you all have now established a PTO. Is that correct?
Yes. We are in the process of, it's going kind of slow, but yes, we have.
Okay, I just want to know a little bit, you know, update, so.
Yes. Fair... Yes.
On the STEM cell meeting on the 13th, what are those times again, please?
3:30 to 5:00.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Davis.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Our current enrollment at Denmark Oldham Middle School is 130. We're currently down three students from our last board meeting. Our total discipline for the month of September, well, October, is 22. School report card data. You do have the report card before you. So we do have our opportunity of growth in academics. We have begun to work on the academic improvement for Denmark Oldham Middle. Our priority is tier one instruction. So we have been having bi-weekly PDs with EOLAs and math, working on instructional strategies, assessments, and just engagement. We have also implemented our interventions. Our after-school program is targeting right now our does-not-meets. We have 30 students who are currently attending our after-school program on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 3:30 to 4:00. Mondays and Thursdays, we have skill focus. On Wednesday, there is a lesson that is taught in conjunction with that. We are still working with our student ambassadors to help us pull student morale, so that they are also on board with the academic improvements that we have. But I think everything is going far, so far, so good in terms of working on our academic growth. Do we have any questions?
Not a question, but a comment. Kathy Griffin, and I've spoken to you several times about us coming to visit your school, and I want to apologize, it's all on me, because I didn't expect the accident. And several of us were going to come and visit. We still want to do that.
Okay.
It will be shortly. And I appreciate you.
And we'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have one other thing.
Yes.
Would you mind if you could put a title on your report? I don't see the middle school at the top of it. I do see it at the bottom, so I was able to figure it out. But at the top, it just says, "Principal's Report to the School Board." If you could include the name of your school, that would be great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Simmons, you're up.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. Good evening. I hope I'm doing well. Yes, all right. I'll be updating tonight. It's from Denmark Oldham High School. Our current enrollment is 170 students. The discipline report you see here, 25 total incidents. Want to talk about the school report card. I've served as principal at Denmark Oldham High School. I think this is maybe year nine, I believe it is. For the past seven years, our report card has been either below average. One year, it was unsatisfactory. Tonight, I'm happy to announce that the 2025 report card, we received an average rating. I said to my staff earlier today, I'm the happiest average student.
That is wonderful.
We're happy for you.
I am as excited as can be. I would like to share with the board tonight what I call Denmark Oldham High School at a glance. And this is basically a document that I've placed in front of you. And it kind of shows our student data, testing data, our report card data over the past three years. And I think you'll notice a trend there. It seems as though every year, we're gradually getting better, gradually improving. If you see the comparison between 2024 and 2025, you'll see that there are positives in every area, with the exception of school climate, and it fell off by point one, which is, in my mind, not very significant, considering most of the school climate is based upon surveys that we sent home. Yes, depending on who gets to survey it on the day, on how they feel, it could go either way. But as far as the academic instruction, students passing required exams, graduating on time, et cetera, those things are all moving in the positive direction. So while my colleagues have a number of thoughts and ideas and plans that they're instituting and implementing for this year to improve, my plan is to steady the ship, to continue to do what we've been doing, because apparently it's working. I think a lot of times when we have a little success, we want to go put 15 other things in and keep trying to push them. We want to work what we've been doing for years and preferably continue to move forward. So that is where we are tonight. I certainly will answer any questions you have as it relates to the report card. The other...
Dr. Simmons, I just like to congratulate you.
Thank you so much.
I know that quite comfortably.
Yes, ma'am. I'm so glad to get the State Department off my back. And I say that because we were last year designated as an underperforming school, and we had to write a specific plan to submit to the state. And it's my understanding, based upon having gotten the average rating, that will now go away. So that's one less piece of paper I have to send, and y'all have to sign. So we're excited about where we're headed. We've got quality staff with Mr. Olmer's leadership moving forward. I have every confidence that we're going to continue to grow and continue to get better.
Thank you for preparing this at a glance. This is great. Thank you.
Yes.
And please tell your teachers and your staff that we are so proud of you.
Yes, ma'am. I'll share this with you, so if you hear it, you'll say that you got it from me before you hear it from anyone else. I was so excited that today I instructed my staff, certain persons on my staff, to go out and purchase some plastic champagne glasses, Coca-Cola, water, and cake. And I brought my staff into the media center this afternoon. I said, "All right, everybody grab a Coke or some water." I turned to the camera, I said, "Coke and water." Everybody grab a glass and poured themselves a sip. And I said, "This is a toast to each of you for the hard work that you do and have done." We're certainly praying that we continue to move forward in a positive manner. It was an exciting time. We're really excited at Denmark Oldham High School and looking forward to whatever the future holds.
Good job, Dr. Simmons.
Good job.
This is a good day for you, Dr. Simmons. I know how you feel, buddy. Ms. Evans, how are you doing?
I'm great. How are y'all?
I was just effing.
All right, so our current enrollment is 690 students. This past month, we had 39 referrals. I'm going to skip over my school report card data just for a second. Upcoming events, progress reports will go home Wednesday. Our fall carnival is Friday. I encourage you to come out and see which one of us is going to ride the bull. We will be having a veterans breakfast, Hightown Engagement on November the 11th. And then on the 18th, we will have our SIC and PTO monthly meetings at 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. And then Thanksgiving break is coming up. And then on to our report card. RCS, their overall rating was good. Academic achievement, average. Preparation for success, below average. Student progress, good. And our school climate was average. I gave you kind of, in front of you, I put on your table, just kind of our strengths. Our percentage of progress points earned was higher than the state. Our percentage of students meeting median annual target was above the state. Our percentage of students meeting median annual target was above the state. Uh, the students meeting added value targets, um, is at the state average. Um, our lowest performing students made higher gains than the rest of the state. Our overall school climate was higher than the state. Um, and overall, our teachers, parents, and students were satisfied with the learning environment. Areas for refinement, we can always improve our academic achievement, our ELA and math. Increasing our preparing for success, our science. We're gonna continue to close the achievement gap of our lowest performing students and then improve our student perceptions of our social and physical environment. How our students perceive us and what we're doing in Richter Trail. And how we're gonna do that, continue with our quality tier-one instruction, our rigorous assessments, um, the revised ELA and curriculum maths based on our new standards. And then we're trying to create an environment where students feel safe wanting to come to school to learn and are building healthy relationships. And something that we did before this evening came out, is start a community circles every morning, it's beginning at seven forty-five, so that students can feel a part of something. So it went right along with what we needed to improve on. Any questions for me?
Yes, I'm sorry, but I do have a question. Is this student, no, preparing for success, is that related only to the science?
Yes, ma'am. Fourth and sixth grade, science.
Oh, I see. It's the I-ready just for fourth and sixth, right?
It's what now, I'm sorry.
Is it the I-ready test?
No, ma'am. It's the, it's that South Carolina State Test for Science.
Oh, okay, thank you. I haven't realized.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Edwards, you mentioned community circles.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
So, um, every morning, the students, some of them get, actually physically get in a circle, some just sit at their desk. Um, and the teachers pose some type of question just to get the students talking, just to learn about one another, um, how they're feeling. Some questions are silly as, would you rather be an alien or a, you know, but just to see, get a feeling of how that child is doing that morning, so do I need to handle this child with care, you know? Sean, what, do y'all do community circles? Tell us one of your examples of your community circles.
Every Monday, I would do.
So just different things, just a way for the teachers to start building those relationships with their students.
That's nice. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Ms. Miller.
Greetings from Banburg Earhart Middle School.
Greetings.
Okay, so let me get into my report. Our current enrollment right now is a hundred and seventy-six. You have the discipline for October twenty, twenty-five in front of you. And if you would allow me to come back to the school report card last, I'd appreciate it. I do have some highlights to share with you. We had several students who had their artwork displayed at the South Carolina State Fair, October the fifteenth through the twenty-fifth. And I'd like to call their names out. Robert Hurst, Carl Jowers, Robbie Frelick, who also earned first-place honorable mention, Peyton Hughes, Lorelei Templeton, Hunter Azzarelli, Hayden Adams, Grayson Collins, and Amani Wallace, and we're very proud of our students. Our quarter-one report cards were issued on October the fifteenth. And then on October the sixteenth, we held a Go Lime Green Night. And the purpose of that Go Lime Green Night was to, um, promote mental health awareness. The National Association of Mental Illness, they came and they presented to our students during the day. And then they provided lime green bows for our cheerleaders and lime green socks for our football players and had a lot of swag to give out at the football game. They did a really, really good job. We are focusing on attendance this year in not just truancy, but chronic absenteeism. Um, chronic absenteeism has been a problem across the state of South Carolina since COVID. And it has been a problem at Banburg Earhart Middle School. So we wanted to focus and bring some attention on this issue, so we had a perfect attendance week challenge. And that was October the twentieth through the twenty-fourth. And if you came to school all day, every day, for those five days, you're getting a homemade breakfast this Friday and next Friday. So we called it the Show Up, Feel Up Challenge. And those kids are gonna eat really good this week. They're really excited about that. We had our homecoming, excuse me, we had our PSAT administered on October the twenty-second, and I'll bring those scores back to you at the next board meeting. And then we had, um, our homecoming held last week, Wednesday, October the twenty-ninth. And our queen was crowned, Clariana McMillan. And then some upcoming events, we will have our Junior Garnet and Black Awards Program this Thursday, November the sixth, at nine thirty a.m. You are all invited. And then we will have a School Improvement Council meeting on Friday, November the twenty-first, at seven thirty a.m. I put a handout, let's go back to the school report card. I put a handout at, on each person's spot at the table. It looks like this, if you pull that out. And this is our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, um, South Carolina School Report Card Analysis for Banburg Earhart Middle School. And so our rating this year, our overall rating was average, our, which means that our school performance meets the criteria to ensure all students meet the profile of the South Carolina graduate. So let me give you some celebrations, things that we're doing well, some glows. Um, the percentage of our students meeting their median annual target exceeded the state. Also, we have an overall positive perception of school climate. Our school climate is looked at or regarded as being safe, supported. And this supports both student achievement and staff collaboration. Um, we are excited that we have an excellent technology infrastructure, which empowers learning throughout our community. We have improved our teacher retention and teacher attendance, which is showing our commitment to a positive and engaging work environment. Now, we do have some ways that we can grow, opportunities to elevate for this coming year. And we're, we're going to increase our academic performance from average to good. We're going to increase our student progress from average to good. We're gonna increase our school climate from good to excellent. And we're gonna decrease the gap in academic performance as compared to the state. And we're gonna continue with good strategies. We're continuing the refinement of our English Language Arts and Math curriculums. We have new textbooks and new standards in each one of those areas. We are continuing to use Mastery Connect benchmarks and Common Unit Assessments. And then we have a dynamic school leadership team that is supporting us in the core areas of ELA, math, science, and social studies. And we have a robust intervention plan using IXL for ELA math that provides us with each student with the opportunity to excel. Our goals remain the same. By twenty twenty-six, we're gonna increase the percentage of students scoring meets and exceeds on the ELA and math sections of the SC Ready and enclose the achievement gap as compared by the state. By twenty twenty-six, and we've done this, we just have not been recognized by the state, but according to their, uh, criteria, we have earned a silver award. Um, and so our next thing is to earn, earn a gold award. And then we wanna consistently rate good and excellent by twenty twenty-eight as defined by the South Carolina School Report Card. This concludes our presentation. Can I answer any questions for you?
Congratulations to you also.
Thank you, Ms. Coker. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Last but not least, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Carter, I think they say it's the best for last.
They did, I'm sure.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Olmer, principals, staff, community members, my son. I'm Jordan Smith, bringing you greetings from Banburg Airheart High School. Starting with item number two, we're gonna bounce around. I want to put the important things on the report first. Item number two, enrollment is three eighty-two, no significant changes there. Item number three, thirty-two incidents for October. That's par for the course. Briefing by exception, skipping four, we're gonna go to item five. We will have a School Improvement Council meeting on Monday, November seventeenth, at five p.m. And then back to item number one. We completed wind testing, um, October twenty-ninth. And that was where our seniors who didn't quite meet the standard last year, we will test, uh, the juniors coming this spring. And that test is important because it deals with our college and career rating. School report card. Banburg Earhart High, High School received an overall rating of average. That was a four-point improvement from last year, like four point six points back to, but uh, improvement from last year. Score fifty-nine, you need a sixty to be good. One point away from being good. This is the highest in my tenure as a principal. So we made improvement. We're very happy. A couple strengths that we have, uh, graduation rate, college and career ready scores are strengths. Weaknesses, uh, preparing for success, particularly in the area of U.S. history. I would like to point out, we did make progress in that area, but it is still a weakness for us. What we've done and what we're doing to improve that weakness, uh, we've already invested in a supplemental resource to enhance and assist student achievement. Uh, this is an EOC prep book produced by ABC American Book Company. This is a proven resource. It has, uh, I'll go ahead and toot his horn, when Mr. Olmer was principal, he got an excellent rating. That was one of the books that they utilize in the U.S. history. But this, this is a proven resource, and we're gonna devote some of our RAFAT, Raider Academic Focus and Engagement Time to ensuring those students are getting more help. We've already ordered it for second semester as well. We're also investigating the possibility of embedding a forty-five-minute block that'll, that'll run all year long. That would, uh, allow our teachers to not have to cram so much material in a, in a four-by-four block. This will also reduce the, like, um, my sister elementary school, Ms. Miller, absences focusing on attendance. If you have a class that runs all year long, one-day absence is not gonna hurt you as bad when you're missing forty-five minutes of instruction versus ninety. So that's something that we're heavily looking into. We won't implement it until next year. If we can develop a schedule that's gonna be what's best for our students. And I would also just like to extend a very huge congratulations to our sister school, um, Denmarkola High School. Dr. Simmons has been a great mentor to me. I'm very proud to see him get that average rating. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Smith, go ahead. I'll go ahead.
I just feel really good about what's going on in Banburg County School District. And I'm proud of all the work that's being done, and I hope you pass that on to your staff and let them know we appreciate your hard work.
And Mr. Smith, you know, um, you've got a point about U.S. history and how much you have to cram in. I mean, people don't understand, it's six hundred years of history that is done in one semester. And that's, that's tough to do. I mean, if you're in a college, uh, situation, you would only, you would take a survey of American history, the first part up to the Reconstruction, first semester and second semester of the modern times. And the thing that people don't understand is, unlike the French, who believe that it's not history unless a hundred years have passed, uh, it's history even happened yesterday. So, yeah, it, it is a tough thing and, and, uh, I think ev, just about every school, high school, uh, grapples with the U.S. history in the course test, as far as their percentage of making. And it's not just passing, it's seeing above. And that's what, uh, folks need to understand. You know, passing is, is a sixty in regular school, but it's a seventy as far as the end of course exam goes, going into the report card ratings. And, and it's something that's very tough. And, uh, you know, I wish they would, I wish the state would take a look at that test a little bit closer, uh, and not to try to cram all that stuff in. Or maybe they could do a U.S. history test, uh, per semester, like a history one in the course test and a history two in the course test, and then have the students. But of course, I don't make the decisions for the state. We all know that. But I, I echo Ms., Ms. Coker, uh, and all the schools. Thank your staff for the work that they have done. I have said it over and over and over again, it's a tough job. You go in there every day, you do your best. And we just want y'all to know how much we appreciate the hard work that y'all do for our students in Banburg County. So thank you, Mr. Smith.
And I'd like to also, sorry, guys, but, um, what both of my counterparts said as far as the schools, y'all are doing fantastic as far as what's going on. You're staying on top of it. You're keeping the kids engaged, the students, and also the parents, um, and the family units. And, uh, I applaud each one of y'all, all your staffs. And, uh, keep up the good work and, you know, I see no problem with Banburg continuing to grow and grow and grow. Got excellent leaders, and you, y'all are doing a great job.
All right. Thank you, principals. And of course, uh, I know y'all got things to do tomorrow morning. Hold up, Mr. Smith. Don't set the floor on fire running out here. But y'all are excused, and you're welcome to stay if you want to. But I know y'all have early mornings and y'all have late drives, so thank y'all for being here. I appreciate y'all coming. All right, Mr. Smith, here I am.
I gotta do the athletic.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the athletic report. Mr. Smith, good to see you again.
Y'all have a good night. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for your report.
Good evening again. Somehow Robert bullied me into doing his report. He's, they have a tryout starting today for the winter sport. He's been busy all afternoon getting that stuff ready. Athletic report is as follows. The fall seasons are wrapping up. Banburg and Denmark made the volleyball playoffs. Banburg made it to the second round, while Denmark made it to the first round. Banburg tennis team made it to the second round of playoffs. Banburg cross-country will be in the state qualifier this Friday in Newbury. If they qualify, the state championship will be in Aiken on November fourteenth. And Banburg football will host the first round of playoffs this Friday. It will play against St. John's. And as I previously mentioned, basketball and wrestling tryouts started today. So Coach Williams is very busy. He also would like for me to, uh, let y'all know that he is working on it and will get y'all each basketball schedule soon. Any questions for Robert Williams?
Well, I'm sorry, I do have a question. It might not be one that we can answer, but I noticed in the finances that there were a lot of expenditures for the football clothing.
Football is one of the most expensive sports we have.
I know, but why is it at the end of the season? I didn't, you know, I'm someone on the athletic, I don't get it.
It may not be the end of the season stuff. It, it may just be the way they're billing.
Okay, thank you.
It has, those sports companies build in crazy ways, so it may just be the way they do it.
I thought maybe it was all on sale and we were buying it for next year. Okay, thank you very much.
I don't think those vendors run sales, do they?
What did you say?
I don't think those vendors run sales. Yes, Ms., uh, Sanders?
Yes.
Did you have something you wanted?
Hi, everybody.
Sorry about that.
I would also like us to recognize the Denmarkola, I think it's the baby, um, they did accept me well this year. All of their sleeping as well for the ball.
Good job.
Absolutely.
Depending on any questions, this concludes the athletic report.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith. Don't, don't, don't set the floor on fire. Y'all drive safe.
Yep, drive safe. Take care.
All right, next is our superintendent's report from Stoner.
That's me, you had just the right time. I'm not used to getting sitting down that long. All right. First, I'd like to thank all of our coaches, faculty, staff members, officers, students, families, and community members who have supported our school, our athletic events so far this year. We've had very few incidences at our ballgames, we've had two homecomings this year with fairly large crowds, and we've had no incidences that revolve or involved law enforcement. So that's always a great thing to celebrate. I will tell you that there's been some ideas about maybe having some homecomings on a Saturday afternoon next year, which I thought was a pretty good idea, so that's just been kind of floated to me, we'll see how it goes, or if it gains any traction, and we will move right along. As you, all of our principals did give you an update on school report cards which were released to the public today, ten o'clock this morning. First thing tomorrow morning, I will have a letter to the community that will go out on social media. It's ready to go, just waiting, I wanted to present to you guys tonight before that happened, it'll go out first thing in the morning. But the reason why you weren't able to get all this information last week, when you picked up your board packages, because it was still embargoed until this morning, so. We've been looking at this information for the last couple of weeks, we've been trying to make plans, trying to move forward, but with what we think we need to do to try to correct things that need to be corrected, and move in a good direction and in the right direction. Just got a few things that I want to talk a little bit about with the report cards. As shared by the principals in their reports, the South Carolina Department of Education released a twenty-four, twenty-five school report cards earlier today. A copy of the district report card summaries included in your packet, you have a packet in front of you that looks like this, it's got all of your schools in the district are in it, all the information from schools in it, including the district. The district does not get any grade like schools do, okay? It does not, it's just a summary of what you see when you look at each schools. Several schools demonstrated meaningful progress this year, however, the overall results were mixed, and they're not exactly what we want, but we're working on that. We've got a really good group of administrators here to talk to you earlier tonight about what they're doing, trying to move forward. We've got a really good group of teachers, we've got a really good group of students, and we hope to all be able to work together this year and move forward. If you looked at our report cards from three years ago, you would see significant growth from three years ago until this year across the district. You can go online, and that link will online to the State Department of Education, and you can find information that you've got in front of you now, and I'm saying that for our people who are listening to this meeting tonight, they can go onto the State Department of Education, and they can find all of this information online. That hyperlink will go out tomorrow morning when my letter comes out to the community, it'll be included in that letter as well, so it'll show them exactly where they can go. These ratings reflect only one measure of school performance and do not capture the full range of efforts and accomplishments happening daily across our schools. Next steps and areas of focus, we're carefully reviewing all factors that influence student success, including attendance, scheduling, academic and support services, and behavior. Those are the things that we're trying to look at, those are the things that we're trying to address, try to move our students forward. The better meet the needs of all students, we're exploring options such as extending the school day, and that is through expanding intensive after-school tutoring opportunities district-wide. Some of those things were able to start, I think, the twenty-seventh, October twenty-seventh, we started at Denmark Oler Middle School, we waited until we had some grades, before we got some data, before we could start with our current group of kids. So Denmark Oler Middle School, we talked a little bit about what's going on at Denmark Oler Middle School. So Denmark Oler Middle School did receive a one-year state designation of underperformance, okay? So what that means is, is that they're gonna have to host a parent meeting, okay? It's gotta be done before the end of November, that'll be for the parents of students who attend Denmark Oler Middle School currently, okay? Those parents have to be notified that Denmark Oler Middle School is an underperformance school, all right? They also have to have created a continuous improvement plan, that's what Dr. Simmons was talking about that he has, that is a one-year designation. So if at the end of this year, they do well, and they place out next year, they would no longer have to continue to write and have a continuous improvement plan, we've already started on that. That plan will be due to the state on January the thirtieth of 2026. You will see that in our January meeting. When we meet in January, I will have that plan for you to look at and for you to okay. We started meeting about a month ago, working on that and working on the after-school program, and trying to get supports in place for Denmark Oler Middle School to try to help them, try to help them with the issues that they're having in terms of academics. All right. We are working on Bamberger County School District website, district website. If you look online, you will see that we've got a new pages up, new pictures up, looks really nice, you're gonna find some things that may not have carried over yet, you may find some little things, if you do, let us know, we're trying to correct those things, there's a whole lot that goes on with those webpages, and thank goodness we got Mr. Paget back there working on them, because if we didn't, I would be lost. So they're very informative, they look sharp, there's lots of information on them, I'd like to thank Ricky for working on that and doing the job he's doing on that. Ricky does a whole lot behind the scenes that he doesn't get credit for, and we do appreciate it. All right, on to our district enrollment data. You've got a handout in front of you, our numbers holding kind of steady, they're down a little bit from last year, still up from the year before, from twenty-three, twenty-four, we're at seventeen seventy-one right now, where we started at eighteen eleven, so. We, you know, those numbers, they fluctuate for different reasons. I don't know of any one thing or any issues right now that would cause us to be losing students, but that's where we are right now, is seventeen hundred and seventy-one students. All right. And Feed My Sheep Ministries, over the last couple of years, Bamberger County School District has worked with Feed My Sheep Ministries with Ms. Sharon Parker, and we're pleased to announce the annual community Thanksgiving Day Dinner Drive-Thru on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from ten a.m. to twelve p.m. This event is free and open to all, meals will be available at two locations, Denmark Oler High School and St. Phillips Church in Oler. We will be making announcements on our boards outside of our schools for our community members to advertise this food giveaway, and you have a flyer in your handouts there that have this information on it. All right, that's all I got, does anybody have any questions? And listen, if you don't have any questions now, and you look at this school report card stuff, and you've got some questions later on, feel free to email me, or call me, or schedule a meeting, come sit down with me, and we'll talk about it, okay? And I know you're gonna have a bunch, there's a lot, yes ma'am.
Okay, I'm a little concerned, this says it's at the high school, and this says meals may be picked up at the elementary school entrance, am I confused? I mean, I am confused.
Well, it is a little confusing at the moment. We'll get it straight.
I need all the help I can get, thank you.
Right, this was given to us, we did not create this, so I will definitely ask some questions. I see what you're saying, it said Denmark Oler High School on Heritage Street, but then it's saying foods picked up at elementary school entrance, so I will let them know before we send anything out, we will try to correct that. I'm sure they'll have signs up as to where to go, we'll make sure that it's all clear. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Omer.
Echo thanks to Ricky for all the work he's doing on the website, everything else he does.
Okay, next on our agenda is request for out-of-state overnight trip, aid Denmark Oler Boys Basketball Team, the High School Basketball Showcase in Augusta, Georgia, November twenty-ninth, and the Denmark Oler Bo A's Basketball Team, the inaugural Chester Christmas Classic in Chester, South Carolina, from December nineteenth through the twenty-first. Mr. Omer?
Yes, sir, you have in front of you two requests for field trips. The first one is just an out-of-state, same-day High School Basketball Showcase in Augusta, Georgia, they will leave and come back on the same day, but because it's out of state, they need your permission. The second trip is an overnight tournament, as you mentioned, it is in Chester, it is in South Carolina, but it is an overnight trip, so it needs your okay. All the information is found, other than the basketball teams are not, because they don't have, they don't have a final roster yet, so just trying to get these things scheduled and okay before December gets here, because it's right around the corner. So, those are the two field trips that we have on the agenda tonight.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Omer regarding these field trips? All right, here's a recommendation of the administration, what is the pleasure of the board concerning these two field trips?
Mr. Ricky?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that we approved the two out-of-state requests, one for Denmark Oler Boys Basketball Team for November twenty-ninth, for the basketball showcase, and the other for the inaugural Chester Christmas Classic for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. First, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, and the motion passes. All right? Okay, next on our agenda is second reading for Bamberger County School District Policy, Section One Instruction, IJND, Artificial Intelligence Responsible Use. Mr. Omer?
Yes, sir, in front of you, you have the Section I, new policy, second reading for the Artificial Intelligence Responsible Use, IJND, this did come before you last month, this is the second reading, so, the motion, yes, ma'am.
Do we have any questions?
I do have a question. Okay, on the second page, under prohibited uses, academic dishonesty, it says that students are prohibited from obtaining improper assistance from AI programs to complete assignments, engage in cheating and all the other bad stuff, and they're expected to complete assignments independently. And if they use the programs incorrectly, it will be considered a violation of the student conduct policy. I have a concern in that now when you go on Google, one of the first things, and you put in a topic, usually the first article is by AI, and if you're just looking for a fact, like, how much milk does a cow give, or, you know, when did Russia not, end up not being communist, or whatever, you know? I don't think that taking that fact, which you hope is correct and everything, but off of the AI program should be considered cheating. I think that copying paragraphs and having AI write lessons for it, or, you know, essays for you is, so I'm wondering if the way that they're saying, okay Cindy, you can get a fact about the milk, is from the word improper, improper assistance, because in a way, to me, when I read this the first time, it said you can't use it at home, at all. And first of all, I don't know how anybody would ever really know that, if you're just getting like a certain number, or a certain answer to a question. So, that is just something, and I did hope to speak to Ms. the lawyer at the School Board Association, she wasn't there, and of course, then I forgot to call her, but...
I mean, I think the key word is improper.
Okay, so if we say...
So, and I think you have to give the teacher a little leeway, okay? So, like, I was a history teacher, okay? All right, so it's pretty common knowledge that George Washington's first president, but if a kid is doing a report on George Washington, he looks up an article and it says George Washington's first, and it was AI. I wouldn't necessarily, unless he started taking several sentences, or several points from that AI article, then he would be required to cite it.
Right. Then I'm wondering, I've thought about this since last month, and I do think you're right, that the word improper is the key word, I wonder if we could choose in our district to underline that word or something?
I don't know, I mean, one thing, I don't know if that would do any, I mean, I don't know if that would make any significant difference into the meaning of the policy.
Well, to me, it shows you're talking about improper, and you better pay attention to the word improper, you know, it's not just a regular word, it's a significant word. I don't know, you know that I get hung up on these words.
Right, I know, but, you know, one thing, probably a kid's not gonna read the policy. It's not gonna come, it's not gonna become an issue until the first time a student, like, does this with, and plagiarizes using AI because they didn't cite it, and somebody wants to make an issue out of it, and then of course, Mr. Omer's gonna pull the policy, and he's gonna read it, and if they complain to the board, I'm gonna pull the policy and I'm gonna read it, and it's all a matter of interpretation, in that it says improper use. So I mean, you know, I don't know if...
But if they just get the dates that Washington was the president, for example, I don't think that's improper, that's just finding a fact.
Right.
You know?
But you would, even if you were used, if you didn't have AI and was using Encyclopedia Britannica, when you look up George Washington's citation in the encyclopedia, you were going to see he was president from this period of time to that period of time, or world book, I mean, that's usually how presidents are listed. If you go looking in the back of your history book, they usually have a list of the presidents and their terms of office, and a lot of times their birth date and their death date. I think we're going a little bit too deep into worrying about how this thing is going to be interpreted, that's just my opinion.
My opinion that every word in this policy is important.
Yeah.
And if we start emphasizing one word over another, then we might have to go through every one of our policies and underline words, or codize words.
Only, you know, it would be different if the case was will or may, because then you, it's ambiguous, and so you don't know if you have to do it, or you may have to do it, or may not have to do it.
Okay, so in other words, you're saying if I look up, or if a child looks up the date of Washington's presidencies, that is not improper?
No.
Okay.
That's not, that's not, but when you take the whole article...
Right, of course.
And you've got to be careful about fact-checking.
Yeah, right, I know, I understand.
I mean, you know, if...
Laws with AI.
If the AI thing said, well, he was born in nineteen seventy-two, then you better check your facts to make sure that's the case.
Okay, well, if you're...
But I think, I think maybe the policy is the way, I mean, do any of the other board members have an opinion on it?
My concern with AI is especially in the literature writing, language arts, and I, people I personally know, that would never be able to write as eloquently as I've seen, I know AI is doing this, so as a language arts and English teacher, that is troubling to me.
Right, but I do think that is totally covered by plagiarism, you know? You know, because if you don't, if you don't quote or cite it, that's plagiarism, so, that's very explicit.
I have a simple concern here, um, first page, fourth paragraph, and it's talking about all these people that need to be informed about it. A lot of our kids also go to the library. Do, do we, should we also make sure that the librarians are aware of this, or what? Or do we just expect that to be covered, everybody will be knowledgeable? You said, are we talking about-
It's district policy, everybody should be knowledgeable.
Okay, so the librarians will be made public-
Should be knowledgeable, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Could that, okay, but-
Ms. Bush, you looked like you were gonna say something.
No, I, I just, I think it's written well, and I think Denny had a really, excuse me, Mr. Olmer had a really good point about not emphasizing certain words over others. All are equally important.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, in regards to, uh, policy I J N D, what's the pleasure of the board for the second reading?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion that we accept the second reading of policy I J N D, uh, Artificial Intelligence Responsible Use.
Thank you, I have a motion from Ms. Eccles and a second from Ms. Coker, uh, for the, uh, adoption of policy I J N D Artificial Intelligence Responsible Use. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, and the policy hears. Next on our agenda, the second reading will Bamberg County School District Policy, Section K, School Community and Home Relations, K F, Community Use of School Facilities, and K F dash E, parentheses, one, Community Use of School Facilities Exhibit. Uh, Mr. Olmer?
Yes, sir. Up before you is the second reading of Section K, uh, K F, where we updated, we added a time limit, um, and we also added a no tobacco use clause into that policy, um, regarding the use of school facilities. Um, in K F E, the exhibit, uh, we made the same, um, changes to the exhibit that we made to the policy in terms of, uh, a time limit and a no tobacco, uh, clause to that as well. Um, this is the second reading.
And we need a, yeah, or a nay, okay. All right, you've heard the recommendation from the administration concerning, uh, the policy and the exhibit. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the policy K F, Community Use of School Facilities, as well as K F dash E, Community Use of School Facilities, the update.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Griffin, Griffin, and a second from Ms. Hurst. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is the first reading for Bamberg School District Policy, Section E Support Services, E E A G, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. Mr. Olmer?
Yes, sir. Before you have E E A G for first reading, uh, if you look on, uh, this policy, you will see that we have changed the wording from staff members, uh, must obtain verbal, um, parental permission, or at a minimum, every effort has been made to obtain such permission. We have reworded that to say, staff members must obtain written parent permission. Uh, and we, um, deleted, or at a minimum, every effort is made, has been made to obtain such permission. We believe that if staff is going to be transporting students, that they have to have written permission, and not just verbal permission.
Are there any questions for Mr. Olmer concerning this policy?
Nope.
Yeah, I, I think that's pretty straightforward. I can't believe that they would even have verbiage in there about verbal permission.
I'd be surprised if it existed like that.
Yeah, I am too. Okay. Uh, you've heard the recommendation from Mr. Olmer concerning the first reading of E E A G Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board concerning this policy?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we accept policy E E A G Student Transportation in Private Vehicles, as presented.
Thank you. We've got a motion from Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Griffin. Is there any discussion? I keep forgetting answers. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, okay? All right, next on the agenda is first reading for Section J Students, J K E dash R, this is administrative rule for expulsion of students. Mr. Olmer?
Yes, sir. Before you is, uh, first reading of J K E dash R, expulsion of students. We, uh, we would like to update it, add more specific provisions, and those provisions are, um, the right, the superintendent or his or her designated, you'll see that that's all highlighted in yellow. Uh, that is, those are the changes made. If you look down in the hearing procedure, uh, you will see, uh, which is, um, the second to the last paragraph on the first page, you will see that it also says, a tape recording of the ca- testimony and written minutes summarizing the hearing, and written minutes summarizing the hearing. We would like to delete that part of the policy. Uh, that is the only thing that has been omitted on the first page. All right, if you look at the second page, uh, there's quite a bit of, uh, additions. Sorry, my pages stapled, I'm trying to- Bear with me here a little bit. On your first paragraph, uh, we have added everything that is in yellow. Obviously, everything that we have struck through, we would like to remove. We think this cleanses these paragraphs up. Uh, we've added, um, the third paragraph, the student or his or her designated also has the authority to transfer any student in grade six through twelve, who is at least, in grade six through twelve, who is at la- at least eleven years of age to an alternative learning program in lieu of expulsion. A student who's transferred to an alternative learning program and fails to attend will be considered truant and referred to family court. We do have an alternative program here. It is housed at Bamberg High School. We do have several students in there. Uh, those students have been placed in there, uh, rather than being expelled. Uh, and we have also had some parents who have asked to place those kids in there because of their behaviors, hoping that they don't get to a position where they will be expelled, so. Um, if we have room, our policy does call for us to allow those students to, uh, be served in an alternative placement. If we don't have room, then obviously we can't, because it is reserved for students who are placed in there in lieu of expulsion.
What's the maximum number of-
Ten. Our plan is written to include ten as a max. Um, if you look at the next paragraph, the superintendent or his designated will report his or her decision within ten school days via telephone, followed by notice, so if a student has been recommended for expulsion, and if the expulsion has been upheld, or if that student has been recommended for alternative school and placed in alternative school, um, we have ten school days to notify the parent, which is state law, uh, that's state law. Um, and if you look at the next, it's, we're talking about appeals, uh, which we have, uh, two tonight. Um, we have gone in here and tried to, um, clean this up a little bit, and make it make a little better sense. Um, and we just added here, the decision of the superintendent or his or her designated may be appealed by the student or by the school administration to the Board of Trustees. Uh, if written notice of appeal is made to the superintendent within, we changed it from ten days to five days.
Now, why did you, excuse me, why, why did you change it from-
We changed it to five days because we feel like if you wait ten days to notify us that you'd like to appeal it, then it puts that student out of school that much longer. And we'd like to be able to make a decision, so if that child is, he placed back in school, they can have a decision, get a decision made, and, and move forward.
All right, I got it.
So that's why we did that. Yes, sir. Uh, and then it goes on to say, an appeal to the board will be limited to, we got it, normally, uh, to the established record, which will consist of a tape of the initial hearing, uh, including documentary evidence presented by the party. No new testimony will be allowed unless there are extenuating circumstances and the board desires to hear new additional testimony. So I'm not trying to read through this stuff, and I know you guys can read better than I can, probably. Um, if the recommendation for expulsion is, we struck out rejected, and added reversed, on appeal, the absences resulting from the suspension will be excused if the student's record cleared. So if, if you guys were to hear an appeal and you reversed the decision, that student's absences would all be considered excused. Um, and then it goes on, and we added, all appeals should be conducted at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board, and decisions shall be rendered within five days following the conclusion of the appeal hearing. Um, written notice that the board's decision shall be provided to all parties by the board chair. Uh, there was nothing in there about a timeline as to when that appeal process would take place. And I'll be honest with you, I've been in the high school and, and have served as the hearing officer here for the last three years, and I've ne- I can never remember us having an appeal to a, an expulsion here. This, I can't believe the first dude that, that we've had. Uh, so we started looking at this, looking at this policy and saying, well, some of this needs to be cleaned up a little bit, so, that's why you're seeing this tonight.
Okay.
And you move on down to petitions for readmission. Uh, students who have been expelled for the remainder of the current school year may make, we, we struck through that, and we changed it to, when a student's expulsion period has ended, the student must submit a written request for readmission uh, to the superintendent or his or her designated for readmission. We struck through that and just said prior to beginning of the next school term. All right, so in order, if you were expelled, in order to get back into school, once you're expelled, you're no longer a Bamberg County School District student. So if Mr. David was expelled on April the first of twenty twenty-five, okay? He would have been expelled through the end of twenty twenty-five, June of twenty twenty-five. In order for him to, to come back to school in July or August of twenty twenty-five, he would have had a, he would have had a, he would, he would have had to have written a letter to the superintendent or to the, the hearing officer, asking to be, uh, asking for readmission here, and so he would have to, he and his family would be responsible for, uh, petitioning for readmission, which there would be another hearing, and at that hearing, the hearing officer or the superintendent would hear that student, talk with the parent, and lots of times, that, when that student is allowed back in school, there will be a behavior plan put into place, or there'll be some kind of supports to help that kid be successful when they get back in school. The, the, the principal that would be receiving that student that year would also be involved in that meeting, uh, so that student, that, that principal would know that student, and, uh, they can make whatever accommodations that might be needed to help that child be successful and, and to get that kid back in school. So, that's why, uh, the petitions for readmission. The petition, the, the read, readmission stuff, uh, is on the, on the bottom of your expulsion letters, so when the expulsion letter goes out, after there's an expulsion, that parent gets a letter, and on the bottom of that letter, it, it explains the readmission process. So the parent knows how to get that child back in school. So that, all that's explained in that letter. Okay, and that's all, there's a lot of changes. A lot of changes and strikes there. I'll give you guys a minute to kind of look through it if you've got any questions, obviously.
During that time that they are, not expelled, but whatever, um, are they still given instructional?
So, when a student, when a student is recommended for expulsion, okay? They have done something that is generally a, a level-three offense. They've got a knife, they've got a weapon, they've got drugs, they've been, they've been suspended more than ten days of OSS, or they've been in two fights. There's, there's a lot of different things that will get you five days of OSS, and will get you recommended for expulsion, okay? The principal only recommends you for expulsion. They don't expel you. The principal recommends you for expulsion, okay? Then it moves on to the hearing officer, which in this district now, it's Mr. Denise Cross. She has been trained in that, so she is the hearing officer for our district, okay? Now, so what she does is, is that she contacts that parent, and they schedule a hearing, an expulsion hearing. Okay, and what happens is, is that all the information, all right, that the principal may have, that surrounds that recommendation for expulsion, when they have that hearing, that principal walks into that meeting and gives all of the, the evidence to the principal in the meeting. You don't get all of that stuff before you meet, because if you get all that stuff before the meeting, you've got a chance to no longer be impartial. So your, your job as the hearing officer is to walk into this meeting and be impartial in this decision. You're not acting on the district's behalf, you're not acting on the student's behalf, you're supposed to be impartial. You're supposed to hear both sides, and in that hearing, okay, the principal presents their side. If they've got any witnesses, those witnesses are allowed to speak. Okay, your student and his family has an opportunity to ask the witnesses any questions and present their sides, and your job as the hearing officer is to hear both sides and, and to, and to make a decision about whether or not what happened, okay? If, 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 if it, if the expulsion should be upheld or not. Is it, are we following policy? Did the principal follow policy? All right, did what the student do, break policy, and, and, you know, does, does it meet the guidelines of being expelled? And then what that hearing officer does then is after that meeting, generally, they have ten days to make a decision. That is a state law. That that hearing officer has ten days to make a decision. We don't like to wait ten days. We like to make a decision so we can move forward. If that kid needs to be back in school, we want the student back in school. However, um, we don't generally make an expulsion, uh, recommend, we don't generally uphold expulsion in that, in that meeting. Generally, what happens is if we, you know, we, we, we wait till the next day to make a decision. And when I was the hearing officer, I liked to sleep on it. I liked to look at it, I liked to think about it. And if I slept okay that night, the next day I called that parent up and I said, hey, listen, uh, Little Johnny is expelled for the remainder of the school year, uh, or Little Johnny is expelled, if you have a gun, Little Johnny's expelled for a calendar year, all right? Or Little Johnny is, um, gonna be allowed back in school on probation, or if Little Johnny had a vape, Little Johnny's gonna come back to school, but he's gonna be on, he's gonna be on probation, and he's gonna have to participate in the William J. McCord, um, Adolescence Center, and he's going to get counseling for drugs and alcohol. There's several things you could do as the hearing officer that you could do rather than expulsion, okay? Expulsion's not the only thing, alternative school is not the only thing, there's other things you could do as well, so. Uh, we just, we felt like that, that in order to, to, um, make those things, um, we felt like we needed to make some changes to this policy so things flow better, and so this, so it's more understandable. So, that's why you have this, um, J K E dash R. And this was my baby for a long time, so if you have any questions, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on the first page, notice of expulsion recommendation, there are some dots, one, two, three, four. It's the fifth dot, and this is what's gonna be in the letter that the superintendent or the designated says, and it says, time and place of the hearing, which must be held within ten school days of the day of the notification, unless the parent legal guardian or a representative agrees. I don't-
Agrees to move it, you know, because sometimes they're extenuating circumstances where you can't have a meeting when you'd like to have it. And we've had that multiple times.
To a revised date.
Right, to a revised date.
I'm sorry, I- Okay, thank you. I think that should be added, but-
Any other questions from Mr. Olmer? Okay, all right. Hearing the recommendation from the administration concerning first reading of policy J K E dash R, expulsion of students, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the first reading for our policy J K E dash R, expulsion of students.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Coker.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Bush, and, Ms. Bush, I'm sorry, I keep thinking of the president, I can't. And Ms. Bamberg, a second. God, dog, I can't. Uh, any, any, any discussion?
Am I the only one that feels that that particular sentence that I called out needs a few extra words?
What, what, which sentence, the, about the-
Yeah, unless the parent guardian or a representative agrees to a revised date.
It's got to be held within ten days of the notification.
Right, I understand. Right, I understand that. Or you could say unless the parent or guardian wishes to change the date. You're telling them when it is, and then it says unless the parent agrees to it. I don't, I don't know, it's not.
I.
It's okay, if, if I'm the only one. I don't think I'll get expelled.
The fourth, the fourth bullet.
It's the fifth one, I think.
The fifth bullet, uh, under notice.
Of expulsion?
Of expulsion, time and place of hearing, which must be held within ten days of the date of notification, unless the parent, legal guardian, or representative agrees.
I don't even think that part's necessary.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess they, they need to have a right to be able to, be able to call and say, listen, we can't make it 'cause we, we're having surgery tomorrow.
Right, okay.
Would you like for us to add agrees to a revised date?
Yes, sir.
Inside parentheses?
I would really like that.
Okay, go ahead.
But thank you.
Can do that.
I mean, if you really think that's not necessary, but I really think it's necessary.
I didn't understand what change, what you would change it to.
She just wants us inside parentheses, when it says agrees, she would like to add, say to, unless a guardian or representative agrees to a revised date. In other words, if you can't have it within those ten days because of extenuating circumstances, somebody's sick or somebody couldn't get a ride, which happens a lot.
Well, it could be on the fifth date. They could say let's hurry up and do it, and it could be jumping the date up.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Ms. Coker, would you amend your?
I will amend it.
Okay.
A move that we accept the first reading of policy J K E dash R with the addition of to a revised, parent agrees to a revised date under the notice of expulsion recommendation.
Okay, we have the amended, uh, motion. Do, do I have amended seconds?
Seconds.
Okay. Ms. Bush Reagan, and Ms. Bamber. Alright, all those in favor of first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Olmer. Okay, um, item fourteen, the discussion of the December twenty twenty-five board meeting, uh, Mr. Olmer.
Yes, sir. In the past, some of our older board members may remember, uh, in December, we did not have board meetings. I think we may have had board meetings last year to discuss, um, bonuses, potential bonuses. But I don't think that's gonna be a, an issue this December. So, um, I'm, would like to ask what the board's, uh, what your wishes are in terms of a December twenty twenty-five board meeting are.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Well, we might not really have to have a superintendent search, but we did designate December as the month in which we would start the superintendent search.
Right, and having said that, uh, we can discuss the superintendent search, an executive session in the January meeting. That's one month, it's not gonna make much difference.
That's fine.
You would have the board meeting the first Monday in, uh, December. School was gonna be out, what, a week later? Or two weeks later?
Yeah.
And, uh, I mean, it's, it's not gonna make much difference.
That's fine. We do also have some other unfinished business, and I do think we should really make a concerted effort to finish some of our unfinished business.
Yes, we, we, we can take that up in the January meeting. We, we've got a lot of unfinished business, and we've got a whole year to do it, or at least six months.
I'm personally, I would rather, we'll talk about it in executive session.
Alright, what's the, you've heard the recommendation, what is the pleasure of the board? Cause I, you know, and personally, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I can be here, I mean, we, I mean, or we could not be here. But, you know, I, I got the impression from, uh, Mr. Olmer that there's probably not gonna be that much report or, okay.
And if something comes up, we can call a special.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, alright, so you've heard the recommendation from the administration regarding the December cancellation, uh, meeting, and of course, like I said, any kind of, uh, discussion about the superintendent search will be in the January meeting in executive session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I've moved that we not meet, the board does not meet yet in this.
Okay, we, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Coker, and I think Ms. Bamber too, was that you also?
Yeah. It's okay.
We have a motion from, uh, Ms. Bamber. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from all across the room, Ms. Blin, Ms. Griffin, and I think Ms. Hurst. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, and that meeting will be canceled. Alright, uh, next, board calendar.
Alright, uh, the approval of the twenty-sixth board calendar. Uh, we do need an action on this tonight. We don't, obviously, do our board calendar, uh, fiscally like we do our school calendar. Uh, this is a January to December calendar in terms of where our board meetings are. Uh, there are several months that, when we traditionally have our first Monday meeting, there's a holiday, or we're not in school, or, or, um, or whatever. So, um, there's some things that we need to discuss. Uh, our January twenty twenty-sixth board meeting, the regularly scheduled board meeting for January twenty-sixth would follow Monday, January the fifth. Alright, which is the first Monday of the month. However, this date immediately follows the district's winter break, meaning that school packets would need to be prepared and distributed a week prior to the break. And given the time, and there's likely to be limited information or updates available for, for presentation at that time. So what we're asking, or what we're saying is to ensure more substantive meeting and allow principals and district staff time to regroup after the holidays. We would like to meet on January the twelfth, which would be the following Monday. It would be rescheduled from January the fifth to January the twelfth. There are also some other things too. I can stop or I can move forward. Tell me what you like, would you like me to continue?
I think we, I think, Ms. Bunch, what?
Yeah, I, um, I, I, I think I brought this up last year, and I would like to bring it to the board again, just the suggestion to consider meeting a different Monday of the month, rather than the first Monday, which is our county council meeting. Historically, of course, they haven't approved their calendar for twenty-six. Um, but historically, they've been the first Monday. Um, and from what I recall looking up, Bamber City is the second Monday, and I believe that Denmark is the third Monday, if I recall correctly. I would propose that we consider the fourth Monday of every month. I'm not sure how that works for our principals in terms of reporting. Of course, December, well, November and December, we would have to look at potentially, you know, bumping that forward because of the holidays. But just wanted to bring that out as a point of, um, discussion to reconsider our meeting dates.
I mean, you know, and, and I think, I think what the purpose would be, of course, would be, yeah, some members of the county council, or some, uh, I know that there was some comments earlier this year from the town, the county administrator saying, maybe we ought to go to the school board meeting. Well, we would like to invite them very courageously to come any time. But of course, if their meetings are during our meetings, uh, they very well can't come here. And of course, we can't go there if we feel the need to attend the county council meeting. So I mean, this is something to, to consider. So, I mean, what, how, how do y'all feel about it? I know sometimes, you know, it's almost like being in the Baptist church, you wanna, you wanna change the service time Sunday evening from seven o'clock to six o'clock, people get all upset. You know, so.
I don't think from a school perspective.
I just want to point out too, this is a board policy, so we're gonna have first and second reading on the policy.
Okay.
We change it, just so y'all know.
Okay.
And however, I wonder if we could, if we really did want to meet and invite the county council, could we vote to just change the date of one meeting for a specific reason without revising the policy?
Well, we already suggested changing the January meeting to January the twelfth. So they wouldn't be meeting that. And I see the April and September meetings are also a week later.
Well, by changing the meetings, it might give some of those who are watching us like tonight, that wanna watch county council or go to county council, they don't have the opportunity.
I, for one, would enjoy going to county council meetings, but I'm also happy as it is. I'm flexible.
I'm flexible.
I'm too.
End of month things that happen, uh, those last week, last, uh, the last weeks, the month, so that would make things just more difficult for me.
Well, we could consider, I suppose, another night, or not.
Does the meeting have to stay on a working night?
What does policy say? You know, I forget what, what exactly this is.
We're not sure, Ms. Sanders. She's gonna look up the policy.
On the book of secrets.
Regular board meetings are scheduled on the first Monday of each month. The regular scheduled time will be six o'clock. The board may change the time and place of the regular meeting upon a majority vote of the board at a duly-called board meeting.
Would require change in the policy.
Yeah, would require change in the policy.
And would require two meetings.
Yeah, you'd have to do two readings. So it would be March before we could do any kind of changes.
And we shall majority vote and decide if we move it to change it to a different date for those first two months.
Yeah. Well, do, do you want to do this? Because we know we've got to change the January fifth meeting.
Yes, sir.
To the January twelfth meeting. So, do you want to table this, and us change to January fifth to January twelfth, and then take up the board calendar, uh, at the January twelfth meeting? That would give people time to think about it, and then we can have sort of clear minds to vote. Because, I mean, you know, I, I don't want, I don't want any of our board members inconvenienced. You know, uh, y'all, y'all volunteered to, to do this. And you were elected, and I don't want y'all inconvenienced, you know, uh, doing this. And so, you know, we all knew coming in, uh, when we were, uh, well, we've all known, we were sworn in, that it was gonna be the first Monday of the month. And I think we sort of planned our calendars around that, and so.
Or as voted on. Cause like this year, I think there were two times or so that, you know, they had to be changed too.
So, would y'all like to do that? And, and take this up again at the, in the January meeting?
I think if we're gonna do that, we should definitely decide if we want to invite county council to come, and.
Well, they got a standing invitation to come.
But let's make sure they're definitely gonna continue to be on there on Monday.
Then, then, if you, if you could, uh, write the county, uh, county chair person, chairman, a, a letter inviting him to come to the school board meeting on January twelfth? Or if you wanna give the county administrator a call, and ask him to, yeah, go ahead and announce that they all gonna be in here with us on the January twelfth meeting, so.
How about December meeting?
Well, I will say, if a decision will have to be made in January definitely, because that policy, we have to have four-year, board meeting dates posted by January.
Okay.
So a decision has to be made by January.
So we make the decision in January.
I could go and get it out the next day or something.
But, but the, the policy is still not gonna have
Correct.
Two readings.
Correct.
Is that okay?
It's by the majority vote according to this policy. If y'all decide to move February to a different date, as long as y'all have a majority vote, it's fine.
Okay.
I'm not for changing the date. If I might go on record, say in there.
Okay.
I've already changed calendar to meet on the first Monday.
Okay.
So that would turn my life upside down.
Oh, I have another question.
Well, you know, at least we have three propos- proposed meetings on different nights. So that would give them three opportunities to come, likely.
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, they, yeah. I mean, I, I think so too. If they wanna come, they can come. Anybody who wants to come can come. You know, I, I mean, I, I'm all for cooperation and everything like that, but I don't necessarily think that we probably need to change our calendar just because they wanna come to our meeting. If they wanna come to our meeting, they can change their calendar.
They could also ask us to have a different date.
Yeah.
Well, we're a very smooth running machine, and I can understand why they may have an interest in coming and seeing how we operate.
And I'm, I'm glad we're an educational, uh, we're an educational, uh, agency, and I'd be glad to help educate.
The children are at our center. That's why we, why we meet.
That's right, that's why we're here. Okay, alright. Hearing recommendation, uh, concerning, uh, the board calendar. Let's, let's go. Hearing recommendation for changing, uh, the meeting from January fifth to January twelfth. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I want that we approve the moving of the January fifth meeting, move, meeting to January twelfth.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Eccles, and a second from Ms. Coker concerning the moving of the January fifth meeting to January twelfth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there e- any opposed? Ms. Sanders, I couldn't tell if that was an aye or a nay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. Alright, so we will change the meeting to January twelfth, okay? Alright, so with the idea of looking at the board calendar again, uh, on January, in, during the Jan- with the idea of looking at the board calendar again, uh, on January, in, during the January twelfth meeting, I guess we need a motion to table this until the January twelfth meeting. So, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Bunch.
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, table the approval of the twenty twenty-six board calendar with the exception of the January twelfth meeting until our board meeting on January twelfth.
Okay.
At which point we will revisit it.
Second.
Alright, we have, thank you, Ms. Bunch. We have a motion from Ms. Bunch and Ms. Hurst, was that a second from you?
Yes, sir.
A second from Ms. Hurst. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Hear none, that's what, it passes. And, and we're taking note of what you said, Ms. Bamberg, so, thank you. Alright, next is our monthly financial report. Ms. Fur, so good to see you on this fine evening in October, in November.
So good to see y'all. I wanted to say, Ms. Bamberg was on the board when we met on the third Monday of the month. And then at consolidation, we changed it to the first Monday of the month.
Okay.
So it has only been the first Monday of the month since July, since twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay.
So she was here, Emma said, you might have been on here too, Ms. Echols, when it was the third Monday. So, yeah, they were on the board when we met, the third Monday of the month. Um, but anyway, you have your financial report in your packets. I know y'all are all tired. Um, so if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer or I'll be in my office. Y'all come back there and visit.
Mr. Chair, make a move that you accept the finance report as presented by Ms. um,
Ms. Fur.
You can call me one of my sisters, it's okay, my mom's good, it's okay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, uh, from Ms. Coker and a second from Ms. Echols concerning the, uh, financial report. Is there any questions before we put this to a vote? Okay, hear none. All those, uh, in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and thank you, Ms. Fur.
You're welcome.
That was short and sweet. Alright, next on the agenda is visitors' comments. Uh, there's nobody that has signed up. So, uh, next on the agenda is executive session uh, to discuss employment personnel matters related, uh, to, for recommendations for hire, recommendations for resignation, to discuss matters related to releasing students and to discuss student expulsion appellate hearing. Uh, what is the pleasure of the board concerning entering executive session? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering if we, uh, enter, leave all the session, or if we can enter into the session.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion from Ms. Echols. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Bloom, uh, going into executive discussion, executive session to discuss personnel matters related to recommendations for hire, resignations, uh, release of students and here the expulsion appellate hearings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, we're in executive session.
I will entertain a motion to leave executive session in our open session.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we leave executive session in conference open session.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Coker. We have a motion by Ms. Coker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Eccles and Ms. Griffith. All those in favor of entering open session say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here or none? All right, I will entertain motions concerning, well, first for personnel recommendations for hire, there was no action taken. I will entertain a motion for personnel recommendations for resignation and there were none, so there was no action. I will entertain a motion to discuss matters related to the release of students.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the release of student A, student, I'm sorry, student one, student two, and we, yeah, sure, yes, the release of student one, two, and three.
Okay, all right, thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Eccles. Do I have a second?
Seven.
I have a second from Ms. Bamberg. All those in favor state by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here or none? And that passes. I will entertain a motion concerning the appeals of expulsions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of expulsion of student A and student B.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Bloom to uphold the expulsions for student A and B. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Griffith. All those in favor state by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those appeals, those expulsions are upheld. All right, next on the item is board member comments of, I just could flip a coin. Ms. Hearst, do you have any comments?
Yes, I think I would like to make a motion that the meeting be discharged.
Okay, has anybody else got any comments?
I'll stick with that.
I would like to say at the last board meeting, it was my first board meeting, and nerves kind of got to me, and I did not give congratulations to Ms. Vanessa Robinson Glover being selected as the teacher of the district, and I apologize for that, Ms. Robinson Glover. Again, congratulations on that.
I'd like to ditto that because I was so enthusiastic about our new board member. I forgot what a fantastic job that our teacher had done to be Karen's Teacher of the Year is outstanding, and we commend you, Ms. Vanessa.
I was not here, so I ditto that.
Any other comments? All right, since we're not having a December meeting as such, want to wish all of y'all a happy Thanksgiving, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Also to all the faculty and staff, we wish y'all, and students, we wish y'all a Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, nice little long holiday break. Be safe, and make sure you come back ready to work in January.
You've got to do good work.
If there are no more comments, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I so moved.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Hearst, and we have a second from Ms. Bloom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here or none? Let's go home. All right, thank y'all.